Hello everyone, I'm Mary Ann Tu, just like have been introduced. This is my first time sharing my experience, I hope it helps you to further your course. Alright, so managing student development, actually, I'm sharing here in the set of teachers. It's not with the stand, I mean, I thought it's teachers. So if it is from I mean side, I think the other session, right? So.
I mean side, teacher side, we accept all sides.
I said outside, yeah, so I will touch a little bit on I mean now. Okay, so since I started, I mean, and I'm doing I mean for five years already and teaching for nineteen years. And out of the nineteen years, eighteen years is struggling with form six students. Okay, so helping student to manage transition across the stages. So. So a successful transition will be about they have to know what to do and why they do it and how to do it. So these three means, and these three criteria must be clear for teach, for the students. So that they know what to do and how to do it and why they have to do it, so that they are well prepared. So for the first thing, in schools, so I will talk about my experience as teachers. In schools, this is a human, human behavior, means that every students are our babies, we need to have our patient net. So I put a laugh, a laugh over there. Okay, without the patient net in education, I think it's hard for us to go through, especially nowadays, there is an education transition. Everyone are struggling to adapt to the online learning and then back to the normal and against the COVID. Just like they say educators are frontline, yeah, every day we face off these challenges, right? So as teachers, the people involved are teachers and students, right? So in, in these stages, we will focus on teachers for, so as I mean, maybe, or maybe as teachers. Okay, first of all, teachers has to be passionate, first thing, there has to be well prepared in their content, whether you are teaching your own option or not. Okay, if you are given the option, but it is not the subject that which is not from your option, you have to be well prepared because students is there. Okay, your job is bring the lesson well. And then after you have your content well prepared, then you can. I have all the things here, so you, you will have to, apart from content, you can build the students' character throughout, develop through, through the transition period. Okay, what is my draft, I continue, okay? So this is the, this is the things that where I show you, this is a teachers. First of all, teachers and students, especially in their transition period from, from form five to form six, or maybe form five to A level or in other school or matriculation. Okay, one is compulsory education and form six, after form six, it is not compulsory anymore. So when it is not compulsory anymore, student maybe they struggle. And then they are a little bit, always say they are in adult season, young adult, okay? So they have their own thinking, they have their own behavior and they have their own principle. They need to know why they need to be here, they need to know how to struggle through to go, to take over the challenge. So these are the, the, some of the pictures we and our students. First of all, I would like to say that teachers has to prepare ourselves first, so this is the things. And teachers must be ready and must be passionate, even though how bad is your days? When you enter your class, you should not bring in your emotion, okay, you have to smile. And because there are a few twenty over thirty over students in front of you. So you bring your class well, because they might have their own problem also, but during the lesson, you had to be friend also. Means that you have your own principle, but be flexible when you deal with students. Means that they know your principle, let them know what is your, your line, what is your border. Okay, so that when you enter the class, even though your relationship with students is good, but they will never go across it. Right, those are different, but be nice also, so as a teachers like this. So means that let student know what you want, okay, this is the things. Okay, so transition over the stages from SPN to SDPN, students have a lot of changes like. For example, they, they from half year, okay, term to semester. For example, now, now in the May, in the, in May, right, still May, the last day of the May. For form six is semester two and semester three, but for the form one to form five, they are still term one. So they already totally different from the others. And then the assessment, the SDPN, we have SDPN all over the semester, means that they are no longer one time exam, okay? After two years preparation, they every semester they can do it and then they can reset there if they, they can do well. Or they, they are not satisfied with their grade, they can reset again, so this is the different types of assessment. And then the rules and regulation for form six is different, they no longer wear a uniform or what. And their expectation in study also difference, because during form five, they may be follow, follow teachers and they know this is the compulsory education, but for, for form six or higher level. And then before they enter university, this is the transition period that before they enter university. So teachers has a role to prepare student in terms of developing and bring them from secondary student to young adult to like a university level. So different expectation from teachers, so in these terms, we need to develop our student in terms of content, content wise, intellectual. And also their emotion, let them be, be more brave, or we say, when they face challenges, not easy give up. Okay, and then another thing is, we also prepare them in terms of, we say facing problem is like if your first problem in paying the fees, okay, maybe we find support for them. Okay, so, or maybe they have challenges like they need to go out to work, okay, maybe we find our way, see how we can help them. And then student in this stage, they have their own thinking, like if you, if the teacher doesn't teach in the class, they know, they know the teacher is prepare or not. And then if you are, especially during PDBR online lesson, if teacher is not preparing well in, up to them, okay, up to them. We say the, the expectation, they will just off the camera, off the audio and then go away, right? So student at this transition period, okay, we have to catch their attention and heart, okay? They know what they do and they know that you are ready or not. So if teachers is teaching, they will come. So there, there is some, some cases happen in school that some classes, they have full attendance and the next class, and you, you see half of them disappear. So the, so teach, student know well, where, which class they want to attend, especially online PDBR. But nowadays, back to school already, we face to face lesson, they are all in the classroom, we don't have this problem anymore. Okay, but during the PDBR online lesson, this, this is very cynically shown. And then whether the student learn or not, also very, very clear, you have a large gap over there. So. And over the transition period, okay? And students has associate some feelings like they are frightened, they are also anxious, worried, nervous. Because some of them are the first, first children in the house entering university, maybe their parents entering form six, maybe their parents don't have discount experience at all. Okay, and then they may be uncomfortable, right, they are uneasy and some of them, they resist because they are forced by their parents to enter this labor. Means that after form five, they don't want to study anymore, but forced by parents. So they may resist the change, they may during the, during the transition period, they may be not giving cooperation. They just sit there and then look at you, okay? So this is teachers' role, how you develop them during the three semester, right? So how we do it, okay, so we continue. These others, one of the student that we always tell students, accept your past without regrets, whatever you do is a past. Now in form six, in this new area, you are a new you. Okay, try to be adult, to be an adult, and we are here to prepare you to go further. So this is what I and my friends, okay, always tells our students, don't be afraid of the, the, the from that you are known from. And then don't be, we say always take care of what has been passed or what you have done. Even though you don't done well during your SPN, but you are here in form six, you are given a new chance. So we say handle your presence with confidence and face your future without fear, because you have us, teachers will stand behind you. So we always tells our student that, just do your best, okay, if you are worried, we are here. And then we have one WhatsApp session, which they can always go to the link, the WhatsApp group to, to talk to counselors, okay? So these are student, we slowly, maybe you have some student which is not active, right? Some student, they are very active, so you will just get everyone to, to, to come first, to be present first. And then we slowly do the changes and slowly, they will be affected, I would say they will change best on their, I would say, change your mindset first. So first of all, and the next thing is, I, I'm, throughout the, the things, I use quarter as that change model. First thing, establish a sense of urgency, let them know why they need to change, why they need to improve or develop themselves. Okay, start to present and to, to stand in front of the class and start to do presenting, not being pass leave, sit on the, sit on the table and then score well only. Okay, now, so we say, we no longer want you to achieve well in academy, we want you to stand out, okay, to develop yourself, to start by communication skill, to stand in front of the, on the teachers and student, and then don't be afraid of failure. Everyone are the same, we learn together, so this is, we want them to know, this is prepare you to go to university and then after university, you will get your job, or you further your own journey, so this is establish the sense of urgency first. Let them know why they are here and we, we face a lot, there are big challenge in front of you and then how we go through it. And then as teachers, teachers will always stand behind you, is your strong backbone, this is this. And then build a powerful coalition teams. In, in the teams of I mean, I actually has a team of teachers which is very committed. It means that maybe in terms of I mean, first of all, the teachers teaching the same class, if they are good, good with one another, means that they are good relationship. Then they will have stronger affection to the students. It means that maybe in one class for previous lesson, the student is not behaving well, I made the teacher very angry, not passing out the homework. But when, when the second teacher come in, they will say, why you just now you don't have, we say, we're feeling connected, you have to pass out your work. Slowly, homework, slowly, the student will catch up with every subject, because they know that all teachers are good with one another, okay? So among the students, slowly, they will affect them, so that students also from all over different schools, maybe from different schools or different areas, some from Kanawei of some other places, okay? They start to build their relationship, means that studying is not on your own, studying is a togetherness in the classroom. So, so because they see teachers are good with one another, so students slowly, they are, they will see the relationship will help them in, in study. So, so if I see that all the four subject teachers are very good friends, okay, now, the discipline of the classroom is, will be, we say, not that different, we say, even though they are very, we say, not obedient, a lot demerit during form five. But when they go to form six, they change, because first thing, they know the sense of urgency, they no longer children, okay? They choose to stay and then they want to do it, they want to develop and then they will follow. So change your mindset first, so the next thing is, you build a powerful team, right? And then develop the vision for the students, I will slowly explain later on, communicate all the while, monitoring. Because student, if you don't monitor them, they easily, okay, lost, disappear. So as secondary teachers, we still, we still spend time on monitoring our students in terms of passing out the homework, in terms of why they, they are absent or what. Okay, empower others to action, in this case, because I don't talk about I mean. So I talk about how we develop the students, so we empower students to help their friends. We have peer learning, peer, we say, we have project for them to do in the group work. Yes, they learn how to, to, to survive true, prepare them for university. And then we always celebrate the quick wins or small success with students, okay? Because student need to feel a little, little bit of spark, okay, during the class, okay? Or else the stress from the academic, or we say for the exam, will put them down, low motivated. So if they, they always a little spark in their life, they have good memory, they will be together. They will, I said, they will try again together, so this is the, the things. And then sustain the change by reviews, means that we collect their ideas. So if teachers, if we start to collect their, their, their feedback, we have to, we have to learn to be open minded. Because if we just, we, we only want to accept the positive feedback, then no student will give you the real, we say true feeling. It means that sometimes teacher has to be open minded, let the student know, we are flexible, we want to improve, so you can give your true feedback. Alright, so like, when, then after that, we embed the tension, let me show you some example. This is what we have done all this year, okay? So establish the sense of urgency, during the first week, we'll have orientation. We will ask our students to choose, to choose, our instruction must be simple, relevant and very clear. So that they know that they want to stay or they, if they stay, they have a large challenge in front of them, it's not easy. Everything are not easy, but we are, we as teachers, schools, we are always behind your back, we will prepare you. Even though you don't score well in your first exam, you can reset. If you don't have money to reset, to pay the fee, can let teachers know. So first of all, we, we will have to approach them, because some students, they don't speak out, they don't dare to talk, they don't dare to say, I have no money to reset. So this is the time for teachers in secondary school, because they are still children, they are transition from the form five to the form six side before, before entering university. They are shy, they, they are ashamed of their family is poor, they don't have money to reset. But once you settle their problem, you will say that, never mind, I know that you have difficulties, but teacher pay for you first. Or maybe teacher pay for you first is not that relevant, maybe some school, they have fun, they can pay for the student, but hold post with them. But in our school cast, teachers as a committee, maybe some, every year, every teacher will, we will like sponsor some student to reset, okay? The, the children will be touched by your action, small action, only fifty ring it, okay? They will, I, I tell them, I pay for you first, you, you pay me back after you graduate. Means that after your form six, after you finish, you can go for some part time job, right? And then you can pay me back by then, so they accept it. Because if you just give them money, they also very shy to receive money from you. So this is the responsibility that you build between you and the student and then we tell them, I won't tell everyone, this is secret between you two. And me and you, okay? So slowly, we, and we say we build the trust between the me and the students and other teachers also do, do the same. It's not that I encourage teacher to get money from their pocket, now I didn't encourage, because I, I mean, every teacher, they, if they get money from their pocket, I will pay them within the fund, because I try to do I mean part. I mean, part is either way, so as teacher, if you give a small, small, we say, help student, okay? Under your capability, means that you can do something for them. You, when you touch their heart, they will do their best for you, so this is the things. And then sometimes, even though I forgot, I had paid for how many students, okay, now, because fifty ring it, one subject, okay? I, I don't remember a lot, I didn't recall it, they will eventually, hundred percent of them, they pay me back. So this is my experience, so because you have changed their heart, you have changed their mind, they will have, they feel the responsible after, they do well. They, they repair their result by the receipt, even though they don't get an A. Because, because not every student can get every subject by A, right? Okay, as long as they improve, okay, especially from the F, from F to, to C to B, is very good already. So we tell our student, you have to be better than what you previously was, means that the first day you enter form six and the day, the last day before you graduate, you are better. Have you done your best, okay? This is just, just like this, if you done your best, okay, then you are good, we, we, we don't expect you to get four flat like that. But slowly, because of this thing, because they always do their best. And past three years, our school have achieved top scholar in our state. So this is not, we, we are not best on the GPS. We are only telling our student, do your best, do your best, and then unexpectedly, our school gain the highest GPS. We don't have a lot of four flat, but because most of them, they receive, they are, they are, they, they, we don't have F. If you don't have F, the whole school's GPS will improve, you know? The, the average is average value, means that we don't have a lot of top scholar four flat. But because of averagely student improving themselves, okay, from F to C, from F to B or D, even D, okay? All the school GPS improve, so this is the environment that you will change the students. And we say change mindset first, right? So something that you have to be simple, relevant and clear, this is what we have done in our school. So. I, I, I feel stressed when it is always look at the GPS, because we know that not every student from every year are having the same achievement. So one thing, we have to be clear and make students clear about it is, are you better than your, the previous year? And then are you improving yourself? So this is, this is what I, I always tell our student, yes, everything are not easy, but everything is not impossible too. They say, you are possible, just you have us with you. Okay, all these three semester, teachers and student work together. Okay, so this is the sense of urgency, let them know, if you stay, we have to conquer the challenge, we have to face it together. Okay, so we stay and then do to the last minute, with the last day until we graduate. So, and then next thing, and this is what we have done, so this is before MCO, so everyone are crowded together, so okay, so continue. And build a power, powerful coalition team, means that among teachers, actually, and the those teacher who, who are teaching the same class has to be in the good relationship, actually. So means that if you are not in good relationship, maybe you have to, we say frequently, sit together and discuss about, about your, your, your children. Okay, I, I have done this since the first year of as I mean now. Means that I only do it, like, I request every department to do their action research, one, one action research in one year. So I want a real action research, means that teacher has to sit together and talk about the problem. So I said, I just, I just want you to, to do one. And then after that, when all of the department went this, they present their findings. And then we have a little bit of, where sometimes, every class, face the same problem. Oh, so from there, from there, we finally know that, hey, your class, your student, maybe some of the subject, right? They are from the same side of the life, maybe at one, they have Basama Layu and Pungajang. Okay, their student like this, okay? Some student face this problem and then they find out every subject, the, the same student have that problem. And then we know, oh, yeah, this, this student, we need to take care, because not only this subject or that subject, or maybe these students score well in other subject, but they are not doing well in this subject, okay? So we can coordinate, means that when teachers coordinate together, then it will become more effective, effective when we teach our student. Means of our first semester, we always already present our findings and the second semester, third semester, we will start to improve themselves. So means that every batch one action research, so this is in I mean part. But my, my slide is about the teacher with students, so in, in, in the class, the first, we said, the first month, the first month of the student register into the form six, we were ask our teachers to look at the students who had, including their family background. Because sometimes, when you have some student, they have difficult family background, means like, for example, their, their parents have passed away or whatever, they don't stay with their parents. Or maybe they are coming from Ulu, means that from others that they stay alone in this division, just to enter university, maybe like that. So if you know a little bit on their background and then if, if we say, suddenly, there is a test, there is a some test and this student are called to see you. When you look at him, you say, hey, you will close the door and then you say, is that your family problem there? They, they will feel that, teacher, you know me. One, the moment they feel that you care about them, that is the moment that they open their heart. So, so student in your, still wearing uniform, even though they are not, I say, they, they rejected to change, or they have love. I would say the gear, okay, don't want to, don't want to listen, but once you touch their heart, they will be open to you and slowly, don't expect a quick change up, because they are human, right? So slowly and slowly, like second semester and third semester, okay, they will change, because your, your stance has to be friend. You, you say you have to do this, you have to do this, your stance has to be friend, but you have to be nice to them, I mean that, I give you some time to change, okay? Let the, let the times prove it, maybe you talk like that to them, especially as I mean. As I mean, I'm, I'm very firm, because so that teachers can do, we say tend to, is that carry out the instruction easily, because you have a very firm, a very fierce, I mean, the senior assistant. But and then when there's student don't want to obey or don't want to follow the instruction, they are called to see me. Okay, so if I know their background, I find if this student have these difficulties and then when we start to talk about them, they feel that actually, school, somebody is caring about them, because student at this edge, they, they sometimes, their loneliness is very, we say, I don't know how to say, means that they, they, they are touched when somebody is care about them, this is things. So at this transition period, as teacher, as adults, we always encourage, because not many student in our classroom, okay, only ten to twenty, right? So we can distribute the student and then whenever, after first semester, they have poor result, alright, we will have, I mean, that special care for them. So these are things, involvement and commitment from the stakeholders towards the common goals, means that teachers having the same goals, because after we do action research, we know what happened and then our goal is get them improved. I, I don't want to set a goal like, this year you has three point five, next year must be three point five, because every years, the stakeholders are different. The students are different, come from different, different, we say, background. So every year, we need to get the students' value, just like that. And then set target with students, what do you want? Because they might only want to finish the form six and then they want to work, go for work already. Or some of them, they say, I want to go to university with this subject, then you will help them to do a survey or this subject, maybe you need this requirement, okay? This subject must score well, so they know their target and then they will focus. So actually, student at this edge, you just do a little bit of pushing, to me say, and we show them the way and then push them from behind a little bit, they will, they will do their, they will complete their own journey by their own. So as teachers, a strong commitment from the teachers, like we say, among the teachers. And then you have to ask your student to be, we say togetherness, means that, I, I always want my student to be, I give them, give them some project. Okay, let them do things together, teachers together, students also. Means that this project, like this social service, I want you to collect the aluminum team from the whole school, will be carried out by your club. So you have to do it for me, for, for, for school, I mean that, maybe we, we give them the task and then ask them to do it together. At the bed, there have to be some teachers that helping them, guide them, or this is a past, period, previous year report, you can refer to this. And then guide them throughout the, we said, the process of managing the activities. And then the, the togetherness will bring them forward. Means that if one of the student over here, they feel very depressed, their, their friends will notice first before teachers. Their friends will know first, okay, now, so when their friends know first, some of the student, they will tell teachers. So that we will, we said, it's not that we are telling the, the, we said, bad things behind people, no. It's something that when you care about some, somebody and then we say, this student, they are slowly addicted to gamer or like that, whatever they like that. Okay, now, so we will, we will fight one another and slowly, we can, the peer, the peer, we say, peer learning and peer, the, the social presence. Students, they can push themselves, we want to implement positive peer affection, positive peer. Means that let them be good together, even though they come from different schools, different class, different state, right? And then this is the, the strong team together, so wherever you want to do something, they can carry out easily. So we say, develop the vision for change, right? At the, at the beginning of the things, we will always do inventory test, inventory test first. Means that counselor will give them, I, I do trust inventory test. It means that even though some people, they, they randomly answer, but some of them, because there are too many question, like one hundred over, right? They will bring you to a trend and they will analyze it themselves and they ask the suitable subjects. Okay, maybe student, I say, teacher, I don't know how to choose, I always given, because from five, these subject are compulsory. I am given, I'm, I go to this class and this is subject I study. They, they have no choice, but when you can go to form six, we will ask them to choose, okay, you are good in art, go to the art. Right, and then you get A in your art, means that you must have at least one, if you don't have one, we will, we will go for the inventory test to select one for them and ask for their opinion, do you, according to your inventory, you are good in designing and do you like to choose this subject? So then, then that's why we use inventory test for our subject. My school classroom, they have a large gap like for the science two, history, A two history class, only nine student. But A three art class, I have thirty three student, because we best on the inventory test, this is some problem that create the, after I follow this test, but eventually, even though they, they create some problem to teachers, because not evenly distribute the student in the classroom. But students, when they choose their, the subject that they like, they actually cooperate well with teachers. They, they don't reject, because this is the subject that they choose, alright? Means that even though you have a large crowd, if all the student work together with teacher, actually, the, the lesson is easily carry out, because these are adult student. Okay, so and then after they choose their subject, okay, we have to explain to them, we have some coursework. This coursework, if you, you have to learn how to do research, you have to do it, we say, don't afraid of failure, don't, don't just think of copy something. You, you have confident to complete it by yourself, so that when you go to university, you can do your project like that, okay? The coursework and then we will explain to them their assessment, means that for the exam, you have three semester and semester one, semester two, you can reset. We tell them, so that they can do their own strategy, means that some student, they, they say, I cannot cope with four subject, I only studied two first. The other two, I just put it as C as pass and then I will reset the two subject, so I, I don't mind if they do like that, because as soon as, at the end of the semester, okay, they, they get what they want, they have their own goal. So I said, never mind, if you score like this, make sure you pass the other two subject. Means that don't get an F last, so means that you do your best for your target, okay? If you cannot do well sometimes, because of the personal reason, or maybe they really cannot follow the subject, they, they fail, okay? So we will set another target for them, means that as long as you improve, these are things, you have to learn something every day. So, so we set small target for them, which is easily accomplished by them. So so we set small target for them, which is easily accomplished by them, from the small target, it will, um. Uh let them know from from here, this time to this time, you have to do like this, so this is things that. And then about the P A J S K, even though P A J S K and the mask can be, um uh depends on school, but. We actually really do it, means that we actually ask the student could come up to do the extracurricular activity together. Means that they all actually plan their own project, so we want them to be, um like a young leader and then. They have social skill, they talk to teachers, talk to students, are they accomplish their program? And then one thing is, I we we compulsory them to do at least one social service each year. So involvement and commitment from the stakeholders towards the common goal. Um so all these things, I say, uh maybe for the first semester, you must, um carry out six, six times of the. Meetings of the clubs and then six times of the sports like minimum requirement, they know what to do, they plan their, they daily plan the way. Again, with teachers always remain behind them, so so I we hope that there there are some student they left out, uh they they left out. We we always give them some flexibility, that means that personal guidance behind it, so that's why teachers has to be al- always monitors their their own students. Right, and best on the timeline. And then the next thing, uh this one, every semester, we have one, uh one timetable to be given the tops, motivation talks like that. Because of the M C O, right, they have to sit one met- one point five meter apart. So so that's why no social already, social connection already, communication for by means that. Uh for secondary school, for student to do transition, okay, we build them, uh we have to communicate at all levels. Student with students, teacher with students and teacher with teachers. And then we also communicate with their parents, right, sometimes, um one year we meet their parents twice, one year twice. So, um somehow, when you observe the relationship between the students and the parents, if they are, they don't do any eye contact. You will know that this student maybe a little bit stubborn in their, or say, uh behavior. If the the stu- the student is very good relationship with their parents, okay, it's easy for us to advise them, so. So we can observe from here and then we know how to deal with our student when they face problems, so. Um from the from the background, we have to know, uh we we know, we will get some hints now, okay? So human touch and support will catalyze the effective communication, means that students are human. And then we are human, yeah, we are adult, we are more mature, so, um. I have to know that students are human, we have to have human touch in the classroom. When you teach, do you look at your students, uh do you get interaction with your students? Or you just teach the lesson, okay, from the first sentence, first page to the third page as planned in the objective. And you don't even know that your student is following or not, uh that then that will be a very bad communication. Even though the whole class know, uh we say follow well, your objective plan, three objective, but you only carry out one objective. But eventually, all the student can follow that one objective, I think that class is better. So we say, we we, as I mean, we don't force our teachers to must accomplish three or three to today, like like, let some parent do well. Actually, we need, as I mean, we need to be flexible, we tell them, maybe this class, maybe they they. They, we say, their level is, uh we say slower, okay, maybe we plan slower. Every lesson plan has to be customized that fits to this, that classroom. And then even though you plan three objective, you say, I have three periods, oh, one hour and thirty minutes, should have three objective, but when you will carry out the lesson. The the most important thing is, is your student following or not, okay? Even though one objective, you spend a lot of time, but it is more successful that. You teach the whole lesson without one of the student, or only some very intelligent student follow. So we say communication at all level, uh is, in communication during the classroom interaction with students is important. We need to always observe our students, so like me, I always well prepare, one thing is say, well prepared to go into the classroom, I never use my textbook. I never carry out my textbook, so means that everything come from my mouth and my eye interaction with student. Uh I think most of the teachers in my school, I like that, they go into the class like leaving dictionary of that subject, only that subject. Okay, I know, so they will just, today you have to learn like this and then we look at the student. From the student's feedback, you know, each part you have to explain more and that part to explain more and every blackboard is customized. Of course, we have one, um blackboard, like we have one, uh lesson, the notes of, um they have to follow, but the process is different. The process need the interaction between teachers and students, so teachers has to be well prepared, I think in this case, I always emphasize. When you are well prepared, your student will follow, whether they like it or not, okay? So, um this year, I come across with one student, he tell me, I hate chemistry. I I don't know how to say, he said, I I I waste a lot of time studying chemistry, I said, while you give me all the negative response. But when I find out the receipt, his his subject, he actually get the grade from F to to improve. He improved, even though he had it, he he said that citing chemistry is a waste of time. But from their response, okay, teacher, you have to be very, we say, um positive, we say. Um as sometimes, the 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 word from students is not the real intention. Because of their back family background, they straightforward, they don't care about your feeling, but you know you are teacher, right? So just, um don't be say, if you hate chemistry, okay, no, you don't have to study anymore, don't, don't, don't play emotion with your students. Sometimes your student is very, we say, not, um, no, not like, not favorite, okay, they give you bad responses, but. Look at their behavior, just observe, observe their behavior, see whether they, they really in that meaning or not, maybe they really hate it, but. Are they studying, are they doing their best to learn? And so this is the things that I think slowly they will change, okay? Another time is when I put a student from art three to art two, yeah, he actually, um. Uh we say, uh reject, reject the arrangement, but in this semester, just last week, okay, I said, you are finally final semester. How are you? And then he start to be friendly with you anyway already. Okay, somehow the dealing with students, because they are human, every student have different behavior. So, um we need to be communicate, we need to communicate and then we have our friends, teachers' friends. To keep update with their certain, certain, we say, difficult student, now certain student, they have difficulties or they have. Um some prop- behaviorally a problem, okay, you update and then take care, to say, means that. And don't leave them out, don't, don't, everyone, no one left behind, so means that when you bring all of them together, they will feel that they have their own responsibility. To follow up, they won't let themselves fail and they even though they really failed the subject, they will say, I'm sorry. And let you down it, but when when you say teach, we will have to say that, don't worry about it, okay, you have done your best, right, so. So you say that result is not everything and then you, then you still have coursework, remember? Coursework can bring you to the higher mark, maybe at the end, you are not failing, okay? So these are things of, because getting D actually is, um acceptable in university, just your P A must be C lah, so from our past analysis. So effective communication, we empower others to to action for peer learnings of, uh especially peer learning in phone six lah. H is, uh very effective, means that you ask student to do group work or what in pay, all right, they will teach. The way teaching their friends is more effective than teacher teaching students, and this is I experienced a lot because that. Uh I always ask student to to do group discussion, for example, in in one test paper because. We are more exam oriented, right, because from six, every semester you have exam. So we, we give them a lot of test, uh exercise, or we say examples of question item. And then we distribute the question, like question one to ten this group, question eleven to twenty to that group. And then then it's not that we want to test them, we always tell to them, still, um. Answering the examination, we say, is a ruler, a ruler for you to determine whether you need extra effort or not. And whether you need extra help or not, or whether you can achieve even better or not. So I would say that do your best, don't waste your time put asleep during the exam. Try to answer so that teacher know that where is your misconception, don't just say, I don't know, I don't want to answer and then leave it blank, this is a waste of time. So I say, try to answer so that teacher know how, where you, you don't understand, where you get confused, even though you know your answer is wrong, but teacher know way to start. So this is, uh, uh we will say, um say, students, they know what to do lah. So positive peer will let them learn together, play together and accomplish task together and given by the teacher together. We, in this case, when we act, uh we say, we empower our student to do something, like organize a program, actually, we need to trust them. Uh trust from teacher can actually develop the student, means that they will find ways to accomplish the task. Okay, of course, we need to, uh give them some support behind that, right? Uh yeah, brief support is important, support them from behind and then let them feel the the success of say, the. The satisfaction of accomplishing small duty, it was that everything are very important, we take care of everything. So these are the, uh this is a thought that we invite the Doria to to give over here. After their S D P M, right, student, they they even create the Q R code for scanning. This is before M C O, this is nine, twenty nineteen, right, two thousand nineteen. All right, and then this is, um during the first M C O and the school reopen before the second M C O. Okay, we come back, come back, we say, um we have, or say, we miss you, or we say, uh let's celebrate something. So this is before the second M C O, all right, and then when, uh this is, this is before the M C. Uh this is another experiment, the sign students, we say, you do it together, you can accomplish it, okay, so. So we we ask our student to plan something, do something together and then we will guide them from behind. And then we take picture for memories, uh let student know that they have accomplished something. So this is National Day Celebration, if if you ask student to bring their, um we say, to do something, they will feel shy. But if teacher do together with student, they have more energy to do it, so these are things. And then, uh this is one of the activities, this are all before M C O, until now, we still don't have, um discount interaction anymore, okay? Because of the, the the S O P, so this is before, this is something not compulsory in in. Uh we say, not compulsory in school, but we actually ask student to take part. By by having the five K M jogging, some student, they said, I never exercise, I never run even one K M. I say, never mind, you work together with teacher, so they actually really work together, I said, I am very old already, okay? I'm tw- at least twenty years older than you, if you cannot do it, let's work together with me, ah, so slowly they will. After they accomplish all, we will wait for them, those who are very energetic, we say, wow, healthier, they will be, uh we say, standing at the end, end. The end line, the 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 finishing point and then shouting at the the those who haven't reached, means that they will bring water for them, they will help them. The way they interact, even though they know or don't do not know, it's because we know we are from our school, okay? The K B with one another and then they all accomplish, oh, then I, a teacher also has to take the responsibility, means that. Uh we have some teachers in front, some teachers in the middle and some teachers is covering the last student. We 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 need to carry out, we are not enjoying our exercise actually, but we we do our job, we we on duty over there and then we make sure all student. Uh complete the task together, together with teacher and then we take a picture for, um we say. Mem- remember, they recognize their achievement, so after that, they are all of them get their first medal, celebrate quick wins or small success. We was the, uh compliment from peers and teachers will motivate them to do even better and to do more. Right, sense of appreciation, instill thankfulness among students, because we celebrate with them, somehow, student will celebrate with you. Means that because we we appreciate every small success, um down, we say, have been accomplished by students. And then initially, something that it is unexpected, uh this is, uh all the the activities. Some of them get two result means that even better and then this is their first medal because they never take part in jogging, but this is the 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 part. And this is the science fair, okay, we say, even though we don't win, our main purpose is we take participant. Don't be afraid of failure, don't be afraid of, I cannot do it, everything you have a first time. And teacher is with you, I always say, now these three are teachers, uh teachers will be with you. Don't be, uh even though we get the last position, don't worry, okay, at least you represent your school, I said, just work out, work out from your. Uh we say, uh comfortable job, so this is the part that we develop our student in terms of their confidence. In terms of they really, and slowly they will know that what they want, when by by observing from the other side, other school, are this. They know what they want, after they know what they want, okay, a little bit of pushing from teachers, they actually will do their best in their future journey. So, um and this is some unexpected from students, they said, teacher, can we do some presentation for, uh on stage? I said, can, and then they actually, um sing a song and do a. A video show for all the 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 memories, okay, for the three semester behind. Actually, all of the teacher and students, we actually cry over here, okay, it's very emotional, very sentimental over here, right? And then we we celebrate, uh you see, when she also never thought that she can draw such a pretty poster. Means that keep on improving, so we will, we say, we will, we say, excel at the end, means that. And then we do a little bit of, we say, pamera, for for she, for her, for the art student to show their their work. Because look at this small poster, they actually spend a lots of sleepless night, okay, because they have to go to school again somewhere. And then they will do this, so we, uh we say, students, little, little accomplishment, we need to appreciate them. Give them rewards to to give them confidence and then you will have unexpected things from students, okay? Because we are human, we we influence one another, if you, if you always care about them, okay, you appreciate them. At the end, they will appreciate you bad, because this is a before S T P, actually, we don't expect them to to plan this activity for teachers. Okay, so at the end, next thing, sustain the change by reviews, ah. This is the things that when you ask for students' opinion, when you want to know your, the impact of your behavior, if our lesson is good. Okay, be brave to accept the negative feedback, don't worry, like teachers also need to learn. And learn to accept the negative feedback, means that, don't be afraid of failure, maybe we cannot, we are, we are just human, we we cannot do hundred percent perfect. Right, but we can always improve, uh this is the things, this apply the send to teachers, teachers and students and then as I mean. Um don't be too harsh because everyone are human, right? We we are not, um try, do things like a product, uh this food must be same test, same calorie. Every, every, every food can, uh every food must have the same calorie, okay, and then we have a S, uh S O only. But for students, every human are, uh we say, unique, they are different from the others. So our main job is we support our teachers to develop the students' potential. Every student, they have their own potential, ask them first, ah, that when they are good to you, they feel that they are, we say, they are close to you. They slowly will tells you their inner voice, teacher, actually, I want to be like this, 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 ah. Then after that, teachers, your role is show them the way, bring them some example from the seniors, because you have a lot of senior students, right? Right, when students are good with you, when after they go to university, they always come back to you, I just said. Um student that, even though we are not meeting out every year or very frequently, but once in a while, in uh and two to three years. They will think of you and come back to you to give you some input, some input that you can share with your students and then make your lesson more interesting. Because they feel they are connected, they are connected to you, they, what they face are are same as other people they have gone through. And they are seniors, uh outside, also, uh will support them if they go out, uh so this is the linkage that you prepare for them, um. Um sometimes student will give you some, um some, some very, um good suggestion, like, like. Previously, I asked my student, uh is teacher help you, and this teacher teach you, they actually, they say, teacher, we want teacher to be our friends. So this is some feedback that different, because if if they are not close to you, they will not tell you about it, they said, teacher, actually. Uh this teacher, um very good, they they don't blame teacher for not getting good result. They they like teacher to really teach in the classroom because they know that the result is their own, right? Teachers, as long as you teach, okay, even though they don't get an A, don't worry, okay? Student appreciate the work and then not everyone are having A in our journey. So these are things that, of course, if they have the potential, we push them to the highest potential, okay? If they can do it, they they can do it, they, we will polish them, right? If they cannot, we ask them to improve this, this the little things that we can do. Then after they will embed the change, the student will slowly, uh know, uh we say, like jogging. So phone six students, after they graduated, they will slowly take out jogging as their, um I would say, habit. Okay, like they they are not afraid of presenting anymore, okay, I know, and then they will somehow join some social service because it is. Forced to do it during the during school level and then they will attend talks, okay? The talks that not in your syllabus, okay, they will be more open to the things lah, and then sudden online quiz and et cetera. So we will, we will help our student a little bit push from us, we are not, uh we say, we cannot do a lot, but. We always support them, when you support them, they will work their own journey by their own. Okay, so this is what we know, we always emphasize, of course, you have to study, huh, this is this, as teacher, we need student to study, this is our jobs. The student jobs is to study, teachers taught to, to teach, uh to educate our students in terms of, um and also. Um help them to, um improve their, I say, expand their potential, okay, every different, every student are different. So that's the end, I think that's the end from from me, from my sharing, sorry, spend a lot of time because when I start to talk about stories. And then I will be very, uh we say, we say sentimental, emotional, right, thank you.
Okay, uh Madame Chu, uh thank you so much for the sharing. Um to our international colleagues here, um a few things that I want to highlight. What, uh Madame Chu has shared just now is how, um we, uh help students to transit. From, uh secondary school, secondary school is a time where, uh everything is being told. You are being told what to do, uh into a system, uh pre-university, this is what, uh Madame Churee, uh. You are being told what to do uh into a system uh pre-university, this is what uh Madame Churi caused by. Um from six, uh thank you Lim for helping to explain uh Kao Kao. Uh equivalent level uh of um uh in in China. So uh for you to transit from one system where hundred percent feature control. To partial control by the teacher, but you have to be the one telling yourself what to do, uh getting things done. Uh it it it's not easy, as Madame Chu had shared in all the stories. Uh just now, uh even uh there's only a few slides, but there's a lot of stories, um and then uh. What I uh what I capture, uh. Um actually, Madame Chu has two roles at the moment, she only explains part of the role, uh but mainly focusing on a a role as a teacher. Uh from six teacher, teaching this group of transitioning students. Uh so uh in summary, uh small wins method. Uh you need to start telling your students that uh they can do it, um you need to start getting your students to get used to. Uh designing your own learning, meaning to say this is what you need to get for first semester, this is what you need to pick up for second semester. Um and I think uh another point that uh. Highlighted, which I managed to capture is uh the pushing. So at this stage where you are expected to be partly independent, partly rely on your teacher to to get things done. Uh you need slack pushing, so uh a little notch is good along the way. Uh to um like the the five K M run, for example. Uh people don't know that they can do it until they actually get get it done. So uh so thank you so much, uh Madame Chu, uh for the sharing. I don't have many questions, because I think I'm biased, I am part of a system before, so I've experienced that before. Uh moving from um like pre-secondary to pre-university, not a uh, I mean. You need time to adjust, of course, uh so I'm opening the session to uh twenty one of you here. Uh if you have any questions, if you need any clarification, um we made them choose, so don't. Uh don't be afraid to ask questions, uh I think um from the. Fifty minute presentation just now, it it shows that there's a lot of experience to be learned, actually. And I think uh Madame Chu will never put you in the present presenter spot, right, so you go. Okay, questions, guys? Any question at all, so we are dealing with a different group of students here. Ida's group from last weekend, uh we had a class last weekend, uh where Ida came in uh to talk about. Um handling kindergartens to seventeen year olds, so now today, uh the the student group is different. Uh it's eighteen going up, so different groups of students, your different challenges, so questions? Anyone? Anis, uh I saw you raising your hand, sorry, I just realized the the hand, uh what, are you raising your hand, Anis?
Yeah, I have one question to make, don't you?
Alright.
Okay, but it's, okay, uh I'm Anis, uh I'm the. For secondary school, but my school have been also the A level, because we have the campus syllabus, so uh. Past eight years, I'm teaching in uh secondary and also come to memory once for a while. And one time I got chance to teach the A level students. And I think I got the awkward moment, eh, if. I experienced to teach for secondary, but not for A level, so my question is. Uh any tips, uh the first moment when we come to teach those who have been a pre-university student. So uh what the tip that uh the very basic one to touch this kind of school? Uh that's my question, so I think is my suggestion, uh my my, uh any suggestions?
Thank you, Anis.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, uh yeah, first uh first lesson in class, my first impression is very important. And for me, when I enter my class, my my secondary school class. I always behave like I'm very professional, something like, I'm very good, I will help you. I I will help you to get A B C student in in pre-u or even in A level, A level, because they are private, right, they they pay for it. So um they have their goal, they have, they want to get good result. So something, the first day in the, first day when I enter my class, I will be, again, well prepared. I prepare a lot of things, I don't, I don't let students know that I prepared it, just like a very obvious natural for me. Actually, behind it, I actually, before I enter the class, I get a lot of preparation, I will look at their background first, see their S P N result. Uh if they are all from the F or E, means that they don't like, and then if the first first time, uh we say first classroom, first lesson, I will be. At engage them to daily life, uh this is also chemistry, uh the piece on your cloth, you wear the cloth. Uh come from chemistry, means that because I teaching chemistry, so connect the the lesson to the life first, because this kind of student, they are here because um. They don't like it, because but it is compulsory, so I will engage them to the daily life. Uh let them know the importance of learning, okay, why you study this, you will get benefit from that, learning from it, I like this. So if if your student background, like for example, one year I get a lot of good, um with a very outstanding student. They want to be doctor of pharmacist, they they study chemistry, I know that they want A, so first first impression, I went to class. I will behave like I'm very professional, I have nineteen years of experience, my student get older as like, let let them impress me first first. And then well prepared with the content, like, yeah, confident to teach, uh this is a things that. And whenever I teach, I will attract my students, I don't know how, we don't even know the times flies, that means that I will keep on talking, talking, even though. I'm the one talking, but student, they they digest it, okay, and then when they do activities, they start to think. They do my met themselves on this, you try to be confident in learning, well prepared is the main thing, because they want to learn. So so my tips is, I actually do a little bit of preparation, look at their background, look at their result, and then I enter the class. And tell them, you have to study chemistry, this is compulsory, you are here, you must learn, I will lead you there, so this is the things that. Uh and then I have small quiz, and then when they accomplish the quiz, at first time, of of course, the quiz is easy, let them win first. Okay, and then press them, hey, you can do it, okay, and then uh slowly build their confidence and then enhance by knocks. Because A level student, they have to cover a lot of syllabus in short time, so you have to give them the knocks behind, means that after the class. You give the astronauts, they will read, it because when they understand, they want to know more. So this is um how I do with A level student or in S T P student, yes, I have experience with A level student also, right, thank you.
Sorry, I'm I'm muted, uh thank you, Anis, uh uh thank you, say, Anis, uh now another, Anis, okay. Anis, uh you left something in the chat function, do you want to come in and uh share your comment? Miss? Are you there? Okay, uh. There or not, but then Anis was sharing, uh student, students are curious of the world that they are at, so I think that we'd expect to what you you're. Sharing just now, okay, um anyone else would like to ask a question? Now, before, I while waiting for you to think about a question or one one think about a response. Uh let me share uh what you have to do after this, uh for uh Madame Chu, for your information, for uh this is the fourth sharing session. Uh your number four, previously is Ida, then uh before that is Xin Yan, uh before that is Joe. Every study session after uh the completion of the study session, I ask them, every student. To do a a sharing, so I mean reflection, so uh this. Everyone is your uh e-learning page, scroll down to week eleven, this is where where we are at the moment in terms of. Uh our lesson, uh week eleven, uh I uploaded Madam Madame Chu's slide. Uh on e-learning just now, so if you want to access the the copy of a slide, uh go ahead, there's there's one copy at the website. Uh the after class, uh when the recording is ready, I will send it to you, Madame Chu, as well as uh Lim. Uh so you guys have a copy of the recording, uh now for your reflection today, uh click on the forum page. Uh five marks, um okay, I saw Anis' question, Anis will come back to you in a while. Um so the question that you want to uh reflect on is recall. Uh how you transition from secondary school to pre-university or university studies? Uh previously, you just follow the flow, now you are in front, meaning your teacher or you're an educator or you're an administrator, looking at the process. Uh what were the challenges that you faced, so a very easy deflection. Uh please also share the key takeaways from the session, so uh for for all this. Uh reflection, I will compile and pass it to you, Madame Chu, after, at the end of the semester, after I do my marking. So um get it done, um. So that's your task after this session, now, uh Anis, uh coming back to you, uh the floor is yours, if you want to ask the question directly. Okay, maybe Anis is not suitable to talk at the moment, so her question is. Uh students that are curious about so many things, they want to explore, uh how do you help the students with the curiosity?
Uh and this is what we have done all this while, um if they don't, it does, if they don't have any curious things they want to try. We have our planning, like, we have jogaton, we have pomeran, we have things, uh we have exhibition, uh things like that lah. So if they want to involve, I said, maybe I want them to be involved, maybe, I say, maybe, do you want to try? If you want to try, first thing, because I I mean, if something that they try, they want, it's not in my field, okay, maybe about the. Banguna, Haribanguna, the.
Consumer.
The uh consumer, they are consumer there, the consumer things, I will ask my economy teacher to help, I will ask them. If this tutor, these students are curious in this thing, and they want to take part on the consumer quiz, uh would you like to help them? So most of the time, my uh our teachers are willing to help, because we like student with curiosity, because when they want it. It's easy for us to guide them, and then we will facilitate them, somehow they will give you um surprise, students always give you surprise. Yes, this is because, uh that's why I love teaching, every year, every student have different stories to you, so there's a lot of stories to share. Um in ca- in chemistry, in science, uh we have done innovation, we have done mini science, okay, maybe with um a lot of things that I just said, do you want to try? And then I will support you from behind, and then we will see, can we do it, uh using, um we say, don't do very dangerous experiment, experiment. Okay, maybe we want to try out, I can, can this a purple cup garbage show different pH value, we really buy the garbage and then. Uh make and cook the gar- the the things are into using the beaker, and then we test with S C and B S, and we. We will always try with them, for science, I always try with our students, okay, then I will say, you have to finish this this topic, okay, this is exercise. At the weekend, before the holiday or during the Saturday of the holiday, uh holiday, the first Saturday, we come to school, we have the whole day activities in school. Means that our priorities still in academy, means that you have to master your job, uh we say your duty to to master all these things. And then we will have some fun behind it, okay, we have found activities behind it, and then sometimes I will ask them to join the national level competition now. Just join in, participate, get the experience, and I would say, sometime we get, um they they once, one year we get, um. It says first runner out, and then we get one thousand ringgit from the consumer society, yeah. So there there is some, sometimes, so they are surprised behind it, okay, so um push your student towards curiosity, yeah, I like it. And then you are, you have teachers to help you, because in a school, you have different, um we say, teachers with different master. They know, okay, almost everything, this is then, all this well, uh every student, if they want to do it. I have, uh I will find suitable teacher to help, okay, we if we cannot do it, I don't think we have, we don't, we we don't have things that we we don't do it. Not 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 now, at the moment, yes.
Uh I think um probably the difference between secondary and going into pre-u. Um is uh the freedom, you think that you have three semesters of work, I mean curriculum to catch up on. Uh two syllabus to finish, but actually, um there are spaces for you to. To get your students to do things uh outside of the curriculum, but still related back to what you're supposed to learn in in class. So um. To repeat the word that Madame Chu use is creativity, uh there's another word that you use, innovation. Uh so it 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 all comes back to the uh the will of the the individual educator slash teacher to get it done. So uh let me check if there's any other questions in the chat function, there's no question for final call. Uh before we close off uh for for the day, anyone? Okay, if there's no question, three, two, one, that's it, uh thank you so much, uh Madame Chu. Uh I think you can relax now, uh probably get some rest before getting back to I S two, don't worry, two more weeks to to go. Uh so um on from my side, thank you so much, uh I hope everyone here uh picks up things. I myself picked up uh some things as well, uh learning from uh Madam Chu. Uh so uh thank you so much, so I'll see everyone again in the next session. Uh I think our session is next week, um Tuesday, same time. Um and uh take care, uh thank you once again, Madame Chu, bye.
Thank you so much, bye, yeah.
Thank you.